Remembrance, David of the trustee towers, the pledge of allegiance by trustee DB, and I'll take the Texas pledge.
I'm waiting for Mr. Armstrong to get in because he needs prayer as much as anybody.
That is true.
Gracious Father, thank you for the beautiful day that you've given us, for the refreshing air. Thank you for the fellowship that's ours in this place, for the privilege that you've given us to be stewards of responsibility and resources. Thank you for this institution and all who serve it. I pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
To the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow me in honor of the Texas flag.
Honor of Texas flag, of the flag of the United States of Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Hey, Dean, thank you.
Can't play ball terribly, son.
We have a quorum present today, and this meeting is being recorded. Members of the public may access this meeting through the Central Texas College website. Now is an opportunity for members of the public to suggest the addition of topics for discussion or to address topics of interest, with a presentation limited to three minutes. Is there anyone present who would like to address the board? Saying none, we'll move to the chancellor's update, Mr. Hopless.
Thank you very much. Get all my things out here so I can make sure I cover everything. Service awards ceremony, and we'll bring this up again December 16th. We are in person this year. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. So, it starts at nine o'clock. It'll be here in the Anderson Center, so that's one announcement. Another one. December the 9th is our graduation fall commencement, and it'll be at the Colleen Civic and Conference Center, and we need everybody there, board trustees and so forth, arrive by 6:00 PM. General Keating will be our guest speaker. And we'll be sending some more announcements later. Solar energy eclipse, I think you might have seen in the paper, there was an announcement that we are joined with the city of Colleen to have this eclipse. Now, the eclipse isn't going to happen for another year, but they're going to have a press conference here. I believe it's Thursday, well, it's November 17th. That would be Thursday at 3:30 PM in the planetarium. So, please attend if you will. That's fall commencement. My last thing, I had the opportunity to serve, as you know, I'm on the, as a trustee with the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges, and I'm on the executive committee. So, Dr. Whelan, president of SAC COC, contacted me and asked me if I would attend the inauguration on behalf of SAC COC, which happened this past Saturday. And so I did. It's Dallas International University, which I really didn't know anything about them, but what I found out is they do translations of the Bible into other languages. And so they go all over the, primarily Central America, South America, and the interior of Mexico. And it was really an interesting and experience, I think, all I can tell you. It truly opened my eye. I thought I'd seen a lot of things, been around the world, been exposed to a lot of things, but this is something I hadn't, and it's just, it was a tremendous opportunity. So, thank you all for letting me go do that. And that's it. We don't have any pictures. We'll have them at the board meeting. So, that concludes my presentation. Okay?
And the next item on the agenda is the swearing in of Officer Grayson Williams. Just wear your right hand. You solemnly swear in the firm, that I will faithfully execute. The duties of the office. A police officer. Central Texas College District.
Central Texas College District.
Of the state of Texas.
State of Texas.
Handle with best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
With constitutional laws.
Constitutional laws.
The United States. And of this state. And the rules and regulations.
And the rules and regulations.
Obligated by the CTC Board of Trustees.
Obligated by the Board of CTC Trustees.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Inauguration. This is welcome.
Thank you, General. Thank you. Thank you.
Could we recognize his family, the cowboys and cowgirls? We're proud of him, too.
Yeah, item five on the agenda is the aircraft update.
Okay, so hopefully I do good because it's my first time. Well, hello, everyone. My name is Abe Moline. I'm the department chair of Aviation Science, and I'm here to present the current state of the program, especially tailored to the fleet and our future intents with the Satch fleet. Next. So, the first thing we're going to cover is the current state of the fleet. I'm going to talk about the times and the way they look. Next. So, the first thing is, of course, the workforce of the fleet, which is the Cessna 152s. We currently have nine. Seven of them remain airworthy, meaning that some components of the alert remaining two are made it so that they're grounded until they get repaired. Next. Piper Archer, this is one of the latest acquisitions of the program. So, these are model 2017s. These are still in very good shape. As you can see, these are two out of two are worthy, so they do not present any hazard at the time. There's no reason to keep on the ground. They're flying often. Next. Then we have the Piper Arrow. This is the other two out of the latest purchase that happened in 2017. These are retractable landing aircraft. Two of them remain airworthy. They're safe. Everything is going well with them. Next. And of course, the Cessna 310. I know that this has been a topic in the past for many years, but I'm glad to present and say that this is going in good direction. I will give you a little more detail so that I don't get too much ahead of myself here, but it's doing good. Next thing. Now, here's a focus on the Cessna 152s. As you can see, I have highlighted a couple of these airplanes. So, on the right, very right side, we have the airframe time. In the middle, we have the year, and when it was acquired, this was way, way long before I was born. So, I have an estimation based on the staff that we have right now, what this were purchased. But we currently have over 10,000 hours on most of these airplanes. And these are airframes. That means the actual structure of the airplane. In the case of the engines that can be replaced, the airframes, unfortunately, they can't. So, what we have done is highlighted the ones that have the most airframe time, and the intent is to replace this aircraft that we have right here.
Can I ask you an analogy?
Of course.
An analogy for this with something we would be familiar with, because 15,000 hours doesn't seem, 15,000 doesn't seem like a lot, but if you consider the airplane's going 150 miles an hour, right?
Yeah.
And that's an hour. So, multiply that times 150, and then you get the picture, right? So, you have a car, for example, have over a million miles on it.
And we're considering, you know, that these airplanes are the primary trainer. You know, these are the first thing the students end up flying, and you've seen, students are not very gentle with the airplanes the first time they fly.
What is the normal life cycle on hours on an airplane?
So, these airplanes, and it has to do a lot with the type of treatment they had. You know, these are trainer airplanes, like I said, they receive a lot of stress during the flight training. So, 10,000 hours is our typical benchmark. We have a mechanic with more than 20 years of experience in the airline industry, Spirit Airlines, other flight schools, then he's on, you know, a lot of aircraft mechanic things. And he has recommended that is a good time to start looking at replacing these airplanes. And I'm going to get more in detail on why this is the case, why this is important, but I'm not saying, and this is not, I'm not saying that it's going to, tomorrow or something is going to happen, but it is a good time to start working towards getting a replacement for this equipment. This is in comparison, oh, next, sorry. And this is in comparison, the airframe time for the other fleet. Of course, you can see the Cessna 310 has very low airframe time compared to the rest, and that's because comparing it to Cessna 152s, flies often and daily, the 310 has a shorter flight course and doesn't fly as often as the rest of them. So, that's why it has a lower airframe time despite being in the same year. So, it doesn't have as much stress. And in addition to that, the students that reach that course, a lot more proficient, you know, more careful with equipment, less likely to, you know, have a hard landing. And of course, we have the 2017 models. They have very, very low flight time or airframe time still, so they'll last many years for now. And I wanted to include the Piper Cop, which is, I don't know if you have seen it, but it's a yellow tail dragger that we have and that we are going to include in continuing education side of the program. So, that still has low flight, lower airframe time. So, there's no need to have any action on these airplanes at the moment. Next thing. So, we want to get a new fleet, and the proposition here is to have four Cessna 152s that will be replaced or traded in. It has been part of the RFP, is an optional item for the vendors. And one Cessna 152 will be a static display for Central Texas College Planetarium. This was brought up to me by a staff member of the college before. I think it's a really good idea, a good way to bring more people in interested in Planetarium, and also to promote the program. We have a couple ideas on how to make sure that this becomes an attraction. And of course, we're going to remove all the parts that we can use, so that it's not an airplane, right, that could be useful. Next slide, please. Now, 310, again, this is like the cherry in the cake. So, we said we have already, and this is the presentation I built a couple of days ago, so there's further updates from the one that I submitted, but the vendor was awarded, the engine was removed and ready to be shipped. All other systems have been checked to make sure there's no other surprises. I put here on the challenges because there's a little bit of back and forth between the vendor and us, but finally, everything got signed off. Vendor and CTC have both signed the quote, and yesterday I received the crate, so that we can put the engine in the crate and we can ship it out. We are going to, our mechanic now is taking care of the logistics because he is going to be talking to the vendor directly, and they're going to pick up the engine, and it's going to be sent out. We expect that this engine is going to be ready within eight to 10 weeks. I'm not sure that the vendor works typically during the holidays, so I wouldn't count on that as active, you know, work, but I think by next semester, we're going to see a new engine with us. So...
What's the estimated cost for overhaul of the engine?
It depends on the airplane, but this one was quoted at $42,000. The intent is to have the donation money to be part of the way that we are going to fund these changes or these services. And I'll bring up right now the next engine that we intend to overhaul. So, that's next thing. The Cessna 152, so you may think, why do we need to overhaul an engine of 152 if we're going to end up trading them in? Well, unlike a car, you know, you can go out right now and buy a car. An airplane typically needs to be assembled when you purchase an airplane. So, it takes time. There's a little bit of time before we can get hands on the new aircraft. In the meantime, we need to keep our airframes, I mean, our fleet safe. So, just like with the airframe times, we have three different types of times that we are always looking at. We have propeller, engine, and airframe. So, in this case, the engine is one of the ones that is constantly working, is the heart of the airplane, and that one has a lot, not life cycle, but it has an inspection or overhaul cycle of about 2,400 hours. So, this airplane, 4833, has reached that point. We already have awarded the vendor to signature engines, and we're basically working on the same steps that we did with the 310. We're going to be, you know, getting the crate, shipping it out, and the same funding is going to be coming from donation. Now, comparing it, small engine, less work done. This engine is quoted at $26,000. So, it's not, okay, smaller engine versus bigger engine, of course, is going to be a little cheaper. Next thing. So, we, again, before we had the quote, we estimated that the engine was going to cost $3,000. Thankfully, it was less. So, the reason why we have to take care of this is because it can impact our enrollment. Fewer flyable airplanes means fewer available seats for students. You can think of the equivalent of having a classroom but not having enough chairs for the students to sit in. So, by doing that, we are going to reduce the revenue of the program. We want to preserve and have a healthy fleet consistently. That will prevent interruption of any training if maintenance is needed for an airplane. So, if we have just enough airplanes to fly with students, when one of those airplanes needs to be put down for maintenance, inspections, or any on scheduled maintenance, then that's going to cause the students to have to wait. So, we have an additional airplane, or we have enough airplanes, and it's just as easy as, all right, go pre-fly the other airplane, we still go. And there's no, it's customer service, and it also helps us finish the students in a timely manner. In addition to that, it prevents us from overusing the fleet, right? So, we can spread out the use of the airframe time amongst the different airplanes. So, we don't have one airplane that is constantly used over and over and over, and which rapidly is going to increase the airframe time of the airplane or the engine time. So, we can spread it out in more airplanes. That'll help us not having to replace airplanes or parts so often. And of course, like I said, this horse is going to be the Jones donation. Next thing, please. Now, I want to kind of show a little bit of the metal fatigue and stress. So, reasons for new airplanes, specifically, we have safety, on schedule maintenance issues, and also the aircraft reserves. So, first on the safety side, we mentioned that 10,000 hours is our mark to start making a decision, start looking for replacements. Airplanes in average could fly between 400 to 500 hours a year. So, we're looking at, you know, again, a good time to do this. And what we see on the picture here is a door frame. There's nothing structurally important on the airplane, but it's to show what happens to the metal when, you know, expands and contracts often, that, I don't know if you can see it, but we have X marks, and they have cracks. These are easily patched, in this case, for the door, but we understand that this is an issue that could happen, and we want to make sure that we prevent this by having a new fleet to make sure that now we have new metal that is going to go through stress, but now we're not dealing with an old airframe from 1980s, right, that has been constantly used. We want to maintain our safety record. So far, we've been very good as a flight school to mitigate any sort of accidents or issues. We have very small situations happening before, handful, but we want to maintain it as a very safe flight school as we move on. Also, on scheduled maintenance, like I said, when we have downtime, it's less flight time, which equals to delayed course completions. We want to, as part of the goal of the program, is to complete flight courses within semester timeframes. And if we have down airplanes, then we cannot do that. So, we want to have aircraft reserves. So, again, we're going to have just a tiny bit more planes to be able to maintain a reserve in case that another airplane is down for maintenance, that the other airplanes can also serve as a way to continue flight training. Next one. So, now, the new airplanes, of course, we have looked at the three different options, of course. Right now, we're waiting for the quotes to come in and see who is going to be awarded the, I guess, the new airplanes for the purchase. What we see here is a Vulcan Air. It's a high-wing, constant speed propeller with glass cockpit. I'm going to show you pictures inside, but this is a competitor to Cessna 122. So, it's a competitor because it is a lot less expensive, and also it provides a little bit more systems that will help our students become better prepared for when they finish their flight courses and their degree program. The fleet availability, right now, we have, each airplane can fly six students, and that is that each student is going to fly three times a week. Our bottom line to serve our student load is three primary trainer aircraft plus one, so four in total. In the event of an airplane needed to be down for maintenance, the additional one can be used to avoid maintenance-related delays. And also, the remaining four Cessna 152s, because as you remember, we have still a couple other ones that are still not in higher front times. That can also serve us to preserve airplanes because their systems are not that different. So, when they fly this airplane, this is a slightly more complex airplane. Moving to a Cessna 152 can help us, you know, continue the student training without having to stop them. And next one, please. You can see how nice, if you recall, the cockpit from a Cessna 152 that we currently have, the sting gauge instruments, and now we're having technology, right? So, when they move on to the airlines, what we're going to do with this technology. And it's going to make it easier for our students to move on to their next step, and the Piper Archer, Piper Arrow, that also share this type of systems. So, we also have an autopilot that makes this airplane a training, advanced training aircraft, so TA aircraft, which allows these airplanes to also serve as an instrument trainer. So, we only have two Piper Archers that are instrument trainers. If any one of those is down for maintenance, these ones could take the load, and there wouldn't be any difference. They will still be able to get the same level of training, and again, preventing the students from not being able to fly because of maintenance-related issues. And it has a lot more legroom, and I really appreciate that because I barely fit in the 152. So, in addition to that, we have, well, like I said, is, next slide, please. We have glass cockpit, it's autopilot, and it's a TA aircraft, but also, in the weather conditions, the Cessna 152 is a lot more restricted than this airplane. I'm not going to get into details, but in comparison, we can deal with a 12 knot crosswind in a Cessna 152, and on this airplane, we can deal with a 20 knot crosswind. That means that we are able to have more active flight days during the year. You know, Texas is very unpredictable with weather, so a lot of times it may look blue outside, but because the winds are now angled enough, now we're having to delay flights. In addition to that, we have better performance. It can climb better than the 152. It can deal with higher temperatures than the 152, and it can also carry more than the Cessna 152. So, sometimes we have heavier students that need to fly, and this would allow them to have, you know, to also fly. So, oh, and I mentioned that we're going to, that our intent is to buy three to four Vulcan Air V1 aircraft. We're going to be able to know the actual figure when we have our latest information from the donation money that we have available. I believe it's late November, we're going to have that update. Next slide, please. And as a summary, like I mentioned before, we're going to be trading four. We're going to have one of them for display, and four of the ones that we're going to keep, and part of the reason we need to keep them is, of course, by reserves or for reserves, but also because our flight instructor course requires them to perform spin training, and it's an aerobatic maneuver that our instructors are capable of performing, but not many airplanes are actually allowed to do that anymore. So, the 152 is still one of the ones that is approved to be able to do that. So, it's another reason that would, as we move on into the future, even if we end up replacing, again, I'm talking about many, many years later, if we end up replacing more Cessna 152s, we're still going to be keeping one of them in the future for that reason. Next one, please. Now, this is a timeline provided by Business Services. So, we have the RFP that was submitted on November 2nd. It was advertised November 6th and the 13th. The question's cut off. It was, or it's going tomorrow, November 16th. The closing date is going to be on December 8th, and the manufacturer deliver estimated time is approximately six months after it has been awarded. Now, industry changes, of course, once we award the vendors, we're going to have that talks about, you know, how long it's going to take for them to deliver. But so far, in the talks that we had in the past five months, they've been consistent with the same six-month timeline. So, we're hoping that we can get these airplanes in by the fall of 2023. Next one, please. And of course, this impacts our enrollment because the aircraft availability is going to affect the school's reputation. It means that it could make it so that there are less interest on the program. Student training, by slowing them down, there's going to be less interest in the program. And the war moves fast in the aviation industry. You know, we, this is a big industry, but it's a close community. So, to put me as an example, I mean, I'm from Mexico City and ended up in CTC. You know, the community talks, you know, and the word spreads. So, we want to be able to have a good word for the program. Now, the next thing is, of course, that the new equipment attracts students. It shows the school's commitment to safety and quality, better prepares the students for their professional career, and meaning that when we have an airplane with a constant speed propeller, that is very common on small, single-engine airplanes and multi-engine airplanes. If a student chooses to be a contract pilot, that can still happen after they graduate, they can fly for someone who owns an airplane, and they can be their pilots. So, that is going to be an essential equipment or training for them. And of course, the glass instruments and autopilot systems will be an additional attraction point for the program. Next thing. The cost is approximately, this is the latest quote we had, is 365,500 per airplane. For airplanes, we're looking at 1.4 million, and for three airplanes, 1.1 million. The variables, of course, the vendors will provide an offer via EBIT, and we'll have the final, you know, cost. The trading can lower the cost of the, or the total cost that we see here, and not until they come in and evaluate the airplanes that we're going to trade in, that we're going to actually have a full figure. And the Jones donation funds will be used in this case. The last time that we had an evaluation in August, it was 1.4 million. So, depending on that, we're going to evaluate what the number of airplanes we're going to get in the future, when the process is finished. Next thing. Do you have any questions before we take off?
I have a question about the donation fund.
Of course.
I'm not familiar with that. Is that in our funds available now? Is that funds to be secured? Help me with that.
So, the Jones donation money was, I think, was invested, I think, right?
Yeah, four years ago, Mr. Towers, we received 1.4 million from Mr. Jones for our aviation program, and we put it in our foundation so it could draw interest and help the foundation as well as us. And I believe that would be, she told me we had given four scholarships this year off of some of the interest it made, but we have that. So, we're going to make a presentation tomorrow. We're going to share with them some of this so they'll understand, the foundation board, and then we move it out. And I think there's a 10-day, they have 10 days of head time, so we need to get the money moved out, and Bob's figured out a way to put it in us, so as these bids come in, we can start paying for them. Those airplanes, when we bought the last ones, Bill, I believe there were 265,000. So, they've gone up $100,000 in four years.
Yeah.
So, we, you know, prices are going up fast, so we're trying to capitalize on this.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was just wanting to make sure the money is available.
Yes, sir. It's there.
Yeah.
Yeah. How many students do we have now?
Good question.
So, the, right now, we benchmarked the number based on the number of flying seats that we have. We have some flight, some courses on the ground that don't require them to be in the flight program, and I think they may be receiving, like, science credits. So, my actual flying seats right now is 61 students, and 11 of those are flying over the weekends to fly cross countries. 50 of them fly on a weekly basis.
What is the basic age or the preponderance age if?
It varies. I'm actually surprised to see the age of the students here. I've seen people in the 50s and 40s, the majority 20s, late 20s.
So, that leads to the question that is, what about high school students? Can, would they be interested, or could we attract them, or is there some way that we could interest them in the program?
We've talked, I've talked to Dr. Kraft about it. He's all in favor of doing that, but then it came back to, we had, Abe's new, he's But then it came back to, we had Abe's new, he's our, uh, fortunately, we, we acquired him as our new department chairman. And until we get this, these airplanes settled and all this stuff settled, uh, do we want to really get into that with the high school? But yes, Dr. Kraft is, is fully supportive of us doing something together and, and having a program. And, and we've talked, and Abe's talked to him too, so.
Yep. Including the, the Air Force has another program that has to do with high schoolers and, um, they do, uh, it's not a background check. But I mean, they, they analyze the GPS of the students. They need to have recommendation letters and this sort of type of students that we want to have in the program to really make sure that they can go through everything.
That's another venue that he, he's come up with, and that's the United States Air Force. So.
That'd be the Billy Mitchell stuff, right?
Um, I forgot the name of the actual program, but it's not, it's civilians, but it's a program that is coordinated by.
Yeah.
I think, I think so.
So one of the, one of the things we're trying to balance out now is we've got these airplanes that, uh, are down. We're trying to get some new ones. We've got to get these kids through these, through their flight time. And, uh, and then we'll decide, we're going to figure out from that where we, where it fits. Is, is sixty a good number to have in the flying status or is it fifty? And, and we're, he's working on that now, so we're going to figure that out. Uh, so he has a list of students who are, who are trying to get in the program and waiting to get in. But we don't want them in until we can figure out how we get these kids through it. Because if, if it's taken three years or three and a half years to get them through this program, it's a two-year program. And, and that destroys, destroys our reputation. And, and it's starting to, those things start to eat at you, you know? Uh, so we've got to be very careful and we've got to let, support him and his folks to get this done. And then we'll come up with, with a magic number, you know? Because remember, all of these students are taking other courses. It's not just flight courses. They take what, five flight courses or something, you know, and then their flight time. But I, I mean, the other courses, English, history, math, all those other things they have to have. So, yeah, it's important.
Yes. Don't laugh at me, please.
No, no.
Is there any, um, way to attract American Airlines or United or someone, uh, some of those larger people to, uh, contract with them? For people to, uh, to enrode into their.
Our intent is to explore, uh, more on starting to have conversations with airlines to be more out there. I don't think the program has been, um, out there as much as it should. So my intent is, you know, when we tackle this, you know, basic, you know, core problems or calls, core situations, that we start talking to people. We have a, a very large alumni presence in the, in the industry. So we need to start taking advantage of that and start bringing them in. Uh, whether it is having some agreements with them or whether it is just having them present, having some career affairs in the airport. So that allow them to talk to students, to motivate them. I think that's what our intent is as we move on.
We, we, yeah. We're lucky to have him as our department chairman. I'm just going to leave everything else alone. But, uh, chief, one chief pilot for Southwest Airlines is a good friend of mine. And his son and his daughter were going to come here. Uh, he diverted them to Oklahoma State University because he is, he's convinced that they have to have twin engine airtime. And we didn't have an airplane that was flying. Our three ten was down.
Yep.
And so that hurts us. We've got to get that, that plane up.
Are there any other community colleges around here that have, uh, pilot programs?
Yeah, Letourneau has one and.
So TSTC is the closest one. Um, as a matter of fact, the Collin College called us recently to get some advice on how to start their program. So they're trying to start theirs.
Collin College is up in McKinney, it's ways away. So we're locally, we're the only ones around, which is good for us.
It is.
Well, Waco is still ways away.
But we're very, very competitive on cost, especially, um, we are, it's an attractive, you know, offer for students, for sure.
Yeah. Well, Abe, thank you.
No problem. Any questions?
Thank you. And we're going to share this, sir, tomorrow with the, uh, foundation board. We'll share the, have it this time.
Okay.
Are you going to be there?
Thank you.
Okay.
Good report.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that report. Our next item is, uh, the ADA project update, Mr. Harmsen.
Good afternoon. Uh, I think you have some information that we sent out in regards to the updates. So I'll just hit a couple of the highlights. The college is working on the, addressing the accessibility deficiencies. Uh, as you remember, the settlement agreement with the Department of Justice was signed on May the second of twenty twenty one. And it included a thirty-six month timeline to correct the, uh, the deficiencies. Um, some of the, I'm not going to go into detail on all of the items on the handout. I hit a couple highlights. So as you remember, uh, because we brought to the board previously, Mr. Michael Mars, who's our new ILA. Uh, it is a retirement from the Department of Justice that they go back and actually survey all of the, uh, the corrections. Uh, he had to step in after Mr. Pruitt notified that the college of his retirement. Um, initially, when we started the project, we had completed an accessibility survey for all of the exterior parts of the campus. And actually, we went through three different surveys. Uh, you have the initial Department of Justice survey that took place. You had a second one for Carol Pruitt and his team. They had to survey all of the rest of the campus that wasn't surveyed originally by the Department of Justice. And then we utilized, uh, Cloud Point was an outside company that used some LiDAR technology to help us with some slope issues around sidewalks and, and, uh, exterior spaces. Um, we've, uh, completed Joel's Flooring has been working diligently, uh, around the bell tower on the north side. And then, uh, around the Science Center, uh, done a little bit of work at Morton Hall. Uh, he's currently working on ADA spaces. So if you go to in front of administration, there are some ramps that were, uh, there's a ramp that we're working on as well as the ADA parking. Uh, we'll be, uh, moving into, uh, accessible routes. Uh, those will not only be around the perimeter, but also throughout the, uh, the mall area where, uh, we may need to address them. In order to go ahead and try to make sure that we're staying on track, we divided the campus into quadrants, which I had listed out there. And, uh, that's the target date that we've gave, that we've given to, uh, Joel's Flooring to go ahead and do that. And so thankfully, uh, he's been able to go ahead and actually have up to three crews over the past couple of weeks on campus. One focusing on pouring, another one on demoing, and then a third one on forming up so that way they can keep the cycle going. The weather and the rain hasn't really helped us, but we've been excited that, uh, even, uh, before some of the rain here, uh, I think it was on Monday, he had a crew out here working. So, uh, that's encouraging. On the interior part of the, uh, of the buildings, um, we're approximately sixteen percent complete with, uh, all of the deficiencies. We have been working with Jamal and Smith on trying to address a hundred deficiencies per month. Some of the deficiencies range from plumbing, restroom accessories, locks. Um, there was a whole list of, uh, deficiencies that we're focused on. I'm not going to take the time to go over those. Uh, some of the, uh, the deficiencies that are in buildings where Braun and Butler will be working, that's for the construction manager at risk project. We'll see if we can roll those into that project. I think it makes some sense to have some synergy there. And then it will also help out, uh, Jamal and Smith as they continue to, uh, focus on the interior deficiencies. Um, a couple, a couple of things. Um, there, there were roughly just under fifteen hundred deficiencies that were identified, which is a lot. Um, but it's also very misleading because sometimes on a report, as an example, you would see, uh, you know, your signage within a building is not at the right height. Well, when you've got forty rooms in a building and every sign on the door, you've got forty rooms that you have to address. Everything that goes along with that, making the signs, making the repairs, patching it, lowering it and everything else. And that only addresses one line item, one deficiency from the report. So there is a, a substantial amount of work that we're diligent, working towards. And the other thing, when we initially started, the initial challenge was you've got this multitude of deficiencies. How do you wrap your arms around the scope of work? Normally you would go to an architect, they would go through and look at designing everything. That would go out to a contractor, you would go out to bid. In this particular case, we didn't have time to be able to do that. And some of the things actually didn't require that because it's, you know, moving a, a sign or something, uh, is fairly simple. Um, but Jamal and Smith has been very good with helping to put these together in a package that we could actually take out to subs within the area. To try to go ahead and address. Um, you know, subs have always been difficult, uh, especially after COVID to get. And then not having a, a logical process for what you want them to accomplish can be really challenging. You know, a, a contractor doesn't want to come out here, do a little bit over here, do a little bit over there. And, uh, that's not the most efficient use, uh, from their time or the dollars that we're going to spend. So I, I, I will just leave you with, um, we are about halfway through with the project. The goal is to go ahead and be completed by May of twenty twenty four, and we're, uh, moving forward as quickly as possible. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your diligence.
I know it's, it's a hard thing to have to come by and do all this stuff. But every time you look around the campus, you see another area that, uh, we have forgotten about. I noticed on the west end of this building, from the west parking lot up to, uh, the entrance, we still got a curb. You've got to go all the way down and go all the way to the center of this building to get a ramp to get into this building. And you've got handicap parking spaces, uh, within spitting distance of the curb. Why did they leave that out?
Is that a rhetorical question?
Not a rhetorical question, the actual question. You've got a curb that doesn't have a ramp cut in it, and you've got handicap parking on the west end of this building. That you've got it all the way down to the middle of the building to get into a ramp.
So what I can tell you is that all of our ADA parking, as well as accessibility from that eighty, those ADA spaces into the building as a part of this project, and it's being reviewed. I, I can tell you, you know, based upon the quadrants, we're not at this point yet. So we started off trying to make a logical approach by working over, starting on bell tower and then kind of working our way clockwise around campus. We've asked him, the Department of Justice was really focused on curves and curb ramps and stuff. So we're getting Joelle to go ahead and say, hey, let's focus on those, maybe not so much on the sidewalks at this point. So we will be coming back around. So he.
Come back around because there's not many people at the duck pond that try to get on this campus. They just kind of wander around over there.
No, no, it's, it's just, it's just a matter of, of, of time to be able to go ahead and hit all the spots. So we're, we're working over at the Kate Center. Uh, actually, he's over at administration. He'll be back over at the Kate Center, working on accessibility from there into the building. Will be, uh, down. He's also looking at some of the areas in front of Eagle Hall and working this direction. So we, it is our intent to get all the areas on campus.
Rex, the check is in the mail. Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And while you're there, uh, tell us about the proposed to purchase CTC program.
So we, uh, received a proposal from, uh, CBRE to purchase approximately forty thousand square feet of land adjacent to the Hemingway Building, just on the south side of the Hemingway Building. Um, you have your, uh, handout and you can see there's a, a little section that's identified on the northeast corner of the property along Bell Tower. The, uh, the offer was for four hundred thousand dollars. And there, I, I listed under the background area, some of the terms and conditions that they were, uh, that they were requesting. Um, I gave a list of three, um, additional comparison properties along Clear Creek that, um, are currently for sale. This was, I think, as of, uh, September. Um, I don't believe any of those have changed, but, um, so the recommendation from the, uh, administration at this point is to, is for the college not to approve the sale of the property. I can go into further details if you want in regards to that recommendation, but I'll leave it there.
It appeared to me like it was a lowball offer.
Yeah.
Based on what commercial frontage is going for, especially on a place like, uh, Clear Creek.
The, the thing that the, that I will say is that if the college, well, I wasn't going to do it, but I, I, I will kind of throw out some additional things. Um, I, I, I agree. I think the dollars, uh, are on the low side. Um, but I would also go ahead and say that if the college does want to go ahead for some reason and look at selling the property, I think we need to do it in a strategic way. I think we would need to look at going ahead and, and getting a broker engaged, determining how the parcels would be divided up. Um, what a reasonable price would be. Um, I don't think that the college is in a position at this point to actually need to go through that process to look at selling any of the property. I think that is a fantastic location, um, gives us a wonderful opportunity. If the, if the college were to choose to use that for other, um, educational purposes, whether it be a new building, uh, STEM, automotive, or, or whatever else that we would choose. Um, I don't know that, that, um, this is the right time to do that. Um, but wanted to at least share the information with the.
Appreciate that. Any question, Mr. Harmsen? Thanks, sir. Item rate is the investment policy, board document number three three seven, Mr. Liberty.
Yes, sir. Generally, when I provide this information to y'all, you'll receive a document that's been marked up. It'll be highlighted. Stuff will be stricken out. Well, there's nothing in there because there's no changes other than the dates. But the policy requires us to present it to you every year and we review it every year. And part of my review process is I have a discussion with the individuals that we hire as our investment advisors who actually way back in the beginning were involved in writing the statute. So they're on top of it. There's been no changes to the Public Funds Investment Act, which is what governs this in five years in the legislature. Um, so no changes this time. This is just standard, I'm required to present it to you. And we will put it in front of you for a vote when we return from the holidays. Only changes were dates. Only changes were the dates. That's it.
Any questions, Mr. Liberty? Thank you, sir. Item nine is the recommendation of any topics for upcoming agenda items for announcements. Start with, uh.
I'm ready for summertime.
Summertime, is that a recommendation?
We just had summertime two weeks ago.
It got to hold in a hurry to me.
Spurs?
No, I'm good.
Yeah, our regular board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday in November the twenty ninth, twenty twenty two at one P M. And we'll have a board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty two at one P M. At this time, uh, the board will go to the executive session. If you will go across hall, please.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry.